Good evening, everybody. I'm calling to order the March 8, 2023 meeting of the Wood Creek City Council. This is our regular city council meeting, 6:30 PM. We can't do that today. And if you can, I ask everyone to rise for a moment of silence and stay standing for a place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored with the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. The chair is called, please.
Mayor Jeff Roscoe.
Here.
Mayor President Brett Foley. Councilmember Laniya Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hamrick.
Here.
Councilmember Deborah Heinz.
Here.
And you have a question?
Yes.
Do business. Do we have any comments?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Anita Collins. Thanks for being here, Anita.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Anita Collins. I am here representing the office of the Hayes County Judge. And I just wanted to introduce myself because I'm the new community liaison for Hayes County. So if you ever need anything in regards to the county, can't figure out where to go, call me and I'll try to get you to the right person. And I've been the executive assistant to the Hayes County Judge for the last four years. And I'm just now in this new position as community liaison. I'm also a member of the Main Street Board in San Marcos, which probably doesn't affect you guys too much. But I'm also a founding member of the council for the Indigenous and Tahano community. So if you have any questions regarding that organization, I can help you with that as well. I'm also a member of the Hayes County Historical Commission. So I, you know, hope to work closely with Wood Creek to, you know, find out what the history is here and if there's anything we should be paying attention to. I'm also the chair of the Film Advisory Board in Hayes County. So I can help you with any film questions that you have. If someone decides they want to film here in Wood Creek, I would be the one to call and talk to. So the judge created this position so that we could keep the lines of communication open between the community and the county judge's office. So the only thing I'm going to leave with you today is a list of contacts for the different departments in our county. So if you have a question on permits or if you have a question on, you know, on adult probation, then we have the phone numbers in contact here. So if I may approach, I would like to leave this with whoever this way. Okay. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Oh, one other thing. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's all over for you.
Okay. And one other thing, we are having the countywide Easter egg hunt on April 7. And we have a record 6,000 eggs that we will be putting out for the children. We have hundreds of children that show up and it's going to be at the historic courthouse ground. That's it. And the Easter bunny will be there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. Have a motion for it approved.
I make a motion that we approve your consent agenda as it is.
Thank you.
All right. We need to remove one of the items. There are no minutes attached.
I'd like to amend the motions. I didn't have any minutes, so I'd like to press five minutes until the next regular meeting.
No. There's no minutes in the package.
Okay.
We can skip over it and we'll, we'll do those.
There's minutes for the 21st.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Your amendment on the board table, all minute.
Okay, I don't.
You don't have them here and then.
My first item, this thing is for item three.
Okay. For best case.
I'd like to withdraw my motion. I am an amendment in the pack.
Right, so draw the amendment. Well, your amendment is the table.
I move to press on the previous amendment for the next regular number.
Second.
All right, so the amendment is to focus on next. Need to get anything with us. Let's put on the amendment.
Councilmember Laniya Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hamrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Heinz.
Aye.
And then we'll put the main motion.
So to withdraw.
He withdrew, but what did you amend that he withdrew his motion?
We need to go on that.
I made a amendment as well, so I made a amendment.
All right. This one is on the right part of the ladder. All right, we'll move to the report from officers and council liaisons. Penny Dunn.
At their March 1st meeting, the planning and learning committee sent two recommendations to council, which will find a part of this agenda, items 14 and 15.
Thank you. For an interview.
They finalized their important Wood Creek City ordinances document. They moved on to review health and sanitation. A subcommittee was created to revise the health and sanitation code and create a draft for their April meeting. They held a brief workshop and tabled a review of ordinances for business use, home occupation and personal care facilities until the next meeting. They are waiting more communication about the flow of communication expectations. And if they should only review items specifically sent from council or if they can proceed to review topics that naturally arise in their work. An actionable item may be needed in the future from council to give them more specific direction on their work in reviewing code, but they did not request one at this time.
Thank you. Bobby Hamrick, Parks and Recreation.
Yes, we, Parks and Recreation Committee got together last week and we had a workshop slash field trip to all three parks and discussed where playground equipment might be able to be placed, which trees may need to be removed to make space for those. They're almost all cedars. There are a few others, but they are, the others are in pretty bad shape. So it'll be an easy situation as far as removing is concerned. Next steps are to continue to price playground equipment, find out what we can do that's feasible, and then go through the process of buying and placing it by way of contractors who will do that for us. Most of them are here tonight. So did I say, did I miss anything? One of the things I was impressed with was Mr. Adney talked about some material that we can use as kind of an underlayment that will save us a considerable amount of money in terms of, it's like a vegetarian ground that'll keep other stuff from growing. And it's also great, I think, for putting whatever we're going to put on top of it, whether it's the engineered.
With.
Yeah, it's engineered wood, that's correct. And or whatever it's going to be. So it'll be, that's a great foundation for all the rest of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Bailey, something on Rose.
We had a spring fed meeting on the 27th that was well attended by Wood Creek. Okay. Okay. We had a spring fed meeting on the 27th. It was well attended by Wood Creek and K3, but we didn't have any bidders. So I heard that's not that unusual. They like to keep things both to the chest. We will be opening bids on the 15th. And that bid opening and the discussion will be with our city manager rule, Cody Adney, the Platinum Road Committee Chair, myself, and Ryan Thomas from K3. So we'll be very busy at that time, but right now we're just waiting.
Thank you. Mayor President Foley is, is out tonight. Asked me to help with the tree board report, which is pretty exciting. We did get word from the Arbor Day Foundation that we have been approved of the Tree City USA. So we're really excited about that. I love it. Thanks to the tree board for that. And then they are also sort of assessing what needs to be done in terms of damage from the trees or discussion about breaking out the inventory and seeing what changes have been made in the tree inventory. So there's some work there. And then the hotel occupancy tax committee. We had our first meeting, organizational meeting on March 1st. Had a good attendance and spirited discussion about the hotel occupancy tax and, and the possible future in, in Wood Creek. And our next meeting is set for March 21st, 10 o'clock. I didn't want to waste any time getting back together again. And we've invited Scott Goslove, who is the executive director of the Texas Hotel Lighting Association, and also their, their general counsel to come and speak and discuss hotel occupancy taxes in general. He is, he's largely responsible for writing the laws around hotel occupancy taxes. I don't know if you know him, Councilor, but he's a, he's a fine friend. So we're looking forward to that. That's all. City manager.
I have a couple of things. The brush pickup continues throughout the city. Waste connections are still working to get all the way through the city and all the streets. But they should be done with one trip to every street by the end of this week, first of next week. And so that will continue. Last week, we talked to them and just give you a sample size of what we're looking at. Last week, they have already taken over 100 dumpsters to the waste site. And those are the 30 or 40 ton dumpsters, those big ones, you know, they can see on the, so they've already done over 100 dumpsters. And that was a week ago. So the council meeting in April, I plan on having a kind of a more up-to-date report. Hopefully, we'll be close to the finish and have a better ideal of monetary, what it costs. So I'll give you a better, more in-depth report at the next council meeting. The tree permit, speaking of the, the trees, we're going to start that again, starting on the 15th, which is next Wednesday. So if you do any tree trimming or cutting down, we are requesting that you get a permit again. We are still sensitive to the trees that were damaged in the, in the ice. So we are looking forward to working with you on, on getting whatever needs to be cleaned up. So we will work with you. We just want to get that re- implemented just because it is beginning oak wilt season and we want to make sure that we keep that within what we want. We've had issues with MuniCode and are posting on the, on the website. For the link for the videos, please use the PDF, not the HTML version. We've contacted them to make the correction and we're waiting for a response. There is a, for council, there's a survey that has been put out for y'all to rate the priorities for our workshop that will be next week, Tuesday, March 14th. So we will have a work, city council workshop on the 14th at 3:00 PM at City Hall for anybody that wants to come to the workshop. Also, on March 25th, there is an emergency preparedness fair at the VFW. There will be booths and activities for all that attend from 10 to 2, 10 to 2. The city will be there. There will be other representatives, PEC, Hayes County Emergency Sheriff's Office. Everything. Fun for all the kids. So please come, bring your kids. You get to up to whoever you want, learn whatever you want, but we'll all be there just to answer any questions that you may have and just have a good time. There will be activities. There will be food for sale.
There's actually food for not sale, but you have to earn it by going by the.
There you go. You'll have to do like a passport.
Hot dogs. Camp is going to, camp is going to supply cookies. I think the best is first to go hot dogs and shave the ice, I believe, and.
It will be a good time from 10 to, 10 to 2, Saturday, the 25th. Please come out, come and go, come and stay as long as you want.
We don't know exactly what's going to come in. They've been talking about like monster trucks in the arena, in the rodeo arena.
So it's, it's, it's still being planned. So we don't know.
It's still coming together.
Yeah, you don't know what you think.
I mean, not like a, it's not like a Wood Creek bouncing house. Not going there, but.
Right. This is a countywide effort and there will be a lot of different agencies out there. So we encourage you to come, learn about being prepared. As you know, last was the council meeting or at the workshop, we, we did a proclamation that March was going to be emergency preparedness month for the city of Wood Creek. And this goes along hand in hand since we just had the ice storm. It's important that we all get prepared for 72 hours to make sure that we have the essential needs that we need. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So on, on the city website, the videos aren't seeming to be showing up or moving. Is that MuniCode things relevant, M&amp;G pixel?
They are on, they are on YouTube and we're working to, to get them posted. They should be posted by tomorrow or Friday.
So they're already on YouTube somewhere.
Correct. They are on, is that correct?
They were posted by 5:00, maybe at 5:00, 5:00 AM. They're all posted everywhere.
Well, on the city website, they're not, but.
Okay, thank you.
So they are posted on the city website. And we're working on getting that faster.
But I didn't know about this YouTube. So is, do we, does the city have a YouTube channel?
Yeah, that's what they're all asking. When you click the link, it's fixed to the YouTube.
We, yeah, we have to download them to YouTube and then we, we download them to YouTube and then we download them into our site. So it's a two-step process. We just don't download them into our site to go to YouTube first.
And city secretary. Okay. All right. So we'll move to the report of the special committee, the ad hoc board group on chapter 154 to 17.
A draft of the site development code revision is complete. An application form was created to support this possible code change and to help provide a clear image of the application process. The committee is again review of the environmental protections chapter, the proposed draft. Next week, they will take up subdivision and EBJ regulations. A packet of these materials was completed when we brought the council for decision on next steps. Zoning will proceed separately. The update on that code. The goal remains to be done in March with the chapter reviews. Discussion of the code restructuring and reconciliation has been postponed. Until after these chapter drafts are completed and shared with council, we are waiting for information from Mr. Gordon on the application submission periods to include in these drafts.
Thank you.
Your resolution. Yeah. Okay, we just, we don't, I don't have a.
Yeah, it's already, it's at City Hall, very, very.
Okay.
The one that y'all interrupted me on at the last meeting.
Yeah, so it just needs to come back in a council agenda to, yeah, okay.
And as of now, our shot clock isn't playing, but the tweaks that y'all asked for is in the draft ready for your consideration.
All right, next on the agenda, special orders. These, the first two are financial statements. And rather than having a consent calendar, which we normally would have because they've been reformatted. City manager rule has worked on them to make them easier to manage, easier to read, easier to follow. And so we thought, okay, we're going to take them out, put them in special orders so that he can discuss changes and answer any questions like that. So city manager.
Yeah, just kind of a update and overview. It looks a lot different than what you used to get. The old information is still in there in case you want to reference it and, and try to compare the numbers, but the numbers are all the same, just in a different format. It actually got converted to more of a full, full accounting system where we have a general, general fund, a debt service fund, technology fund, capital improvement fund. So it's easier and better to track. My next step is to go through the different line items and reclassify expenses and revenue that needs to go in a different category. So the first one was to develop the spreadsheet to make it hopefully easier to read. And then the next step is to clean up the numbers within the worksheet. But I'll answer any questions if y'all have any.
Mayor Matt.
Please.
So I'm, I'm going to go to the financial statement for January 22nd, January 2023, on page 29 of the packet. I wanted this to kind of address the things that added up to 100% more greater and for the January. The first item in the packet that I wanted to address is interest income. It shows a year-to-date to the amount of $20,330, which represents January, a 813.19% of the annual amount by.
But excuse your own.
Yeah, what's page 29? No.
No.
Page 29 is the base data. Yeah. I think you're talking about, well, there's, it's in two places because he has two different systems in here. But you can look at it.
So I'm looking page 34 perhaps.
I wrote down the wrong number again.
Page 11 is another place to see it. Page 11, go to page 11. It's in December, but it's a reasonable.
You want December, January?
I went for January.
Okay. January starts on 32.
36.
In your bucket.
Oh, I just went on. So maybe my next pages are wrong too then because I put under page 30 and 31 of the packet.
What, what packet are you looking at? Where did you get that from?
The city website.
Which, we, yeah, there you go.
Sorry. We will get it worked out.
Will the packet change this or?
No.
All right.
You, while you work on page numbers, okay, is that right?
Yes, please.
Okay. So if we look at page 11, the interest income or, or page 34, wherever you want to fall.
Let's go 34 just because it's in.
It's kind of exciting. Income jumped significantly, but what's going on? What is, what interest rates changed or?
Yeah. We, we probably started the year maybe 50 basic points. Right now, we're at 4.8. Plus two, we have a investment pool, Texas class. And a lot of our money was sitting in the bank account, which was earning a lot less. And so I converted the unutilized cash to the old cat or to the investment pool, which is, yeah, right now it's about 4.8, 4.9, depending upon the day. So it's just the reallocation of the money to take advantage of the increase in interest rates.
Good. That was something we talked about at one of the meetings there. Okay, so I really liked your new structure and formatting. I did have one request and it's okay if you want to ignore it, but having the most current numbers at the end and having old numbers that's the, the left-hand side closest to the line item is a little bit difficult to read. Does that make sense? So I'm looking at the white item on the left and then I have to scroll all the way to the right side of the document to see the most current numbers. And maybe that's just like a standard format.
It's standard format, but.
But it, it is easier to read. So if you ignore that request, it's fine. But on page nine of the packet, if you look at, it says other funding source, fund balance. Is this the transfer from reserve to cover capital improvements?
Which, which.
On page nine.
28.
Nine, yeah.
228.
228.
288 down.
88 is what I wrote.
288, that's what we talked about, Kevin, in the third.
Page nine?
It's on page nine of the whole packet.
It's the fund balance, the other funding sources, fund balance. Total.
Oh, they, yeah. I'm sorry.
I don't know what you're.
So.
Oh, that. Yeah, that was 288 was last year. This year.
236.
236 is correct. It's coming out of fund balance.
So that's the transfer from reserve to cover capital improvement projects, correct?
Correct, because there was a, there is a surplus in revenue. And so that's how come it doesn't equal the transfer.
So a request would be, because like you and I, we're like in this and we get it, but when residents look this stuff up, some of these terms, if, if we can make them more resident-friendly on these board-facing documents would be helpful. So just writing, you know, like transfer from reserve and putting a note in there of what that is would be really helpful. If there's a way to add those notes to these documents.
I could put that next to fund balance.
Yeah. Same thing with, on page. So it says like, there's a transfer to capital.
Correct.
Right. So if you put improvement.
It's capital fund. It's not.
Or capital improvement fund, you know what I mean? So just making it more clear, like you're.
Capital fund, does that work?
As long as people understand that, because capital has more than one meaning, right?
Depends on, yes.
You know, I'm just saying for, to clarify for the public.
Right.
So they understand what these things are.
Capital fund, that's fine.
And then, so we covered the interest transfer. I did have, so our insurance risk pool went up on page 13. Do we have an answer for why?
It goes up every year and I don't know. Yeah, I, I wasn't here when, when they, they put those out in August. And so, I don't know.
And then only two more items on, for projects on page 14. It just, it's $31,000 that's been spent for projects.
Yeah, that was a, that was for the comp plan that didn't get paid in the previous year. That got paid in October of this year. That got paid in, um, October of this year.
So I remember discussing that, uh, actually you weren't city manager yet, but in that meeting we talked about maybe trying to pull out and label some of these others so that every time we see these, there's a clear indicator of what some of these like grouped things were.
Right.
Just so that like, we don't, you know, every six months ask the same question.
Yes.
Accidentally.
You know, we, we talked about changing some of these things and make it a little clearer, um, you know, a couple of months ago. And, and it's like, you know, changing the account names gets to the kind of a problem, but is there a way, Kevin, that, um, we can like, put up some of the things like, you know, item, you know, number one and then down at the bottom.
Yeah, the reason why it's project is because that's how it was before. And so a lot of this is just going through and tweaking it as we go along as, as preferences. So, yeah, we can, we can change that.
Could have, you know, an asterisk and then down below it's a.
Well, if it's, if it's the comp plan, it needs to say comp plan because that's a, uh, big enough item and an important enough item that you want to, um, segregate it out.
And then our past budgets, I mean, there would be a, there would be like a box at the bottom that, that, you know, projects and then it would say.
Well, all your projects will be in the capital fund.
Yeah, but I mean, it was like, it's like, you could, you could reference it back and say, okay, well, that's what that thirty, okay, I see what that.
Yeah, going forward like that comp plan, like going forward, that would have been in the capital projects.
Okay.
And if you look in couple, couple, capital projects, they're all listed out that was, that we have going, even ones that are not funded yet, but we expect funding.
Um, my last item was on page fifty-three, we're going, diving into the line, line expenditures. What is the Blades Group and what did we pay them two thousand dollars for?
Blades Group is the, um, company that we get the asphalt for with pallets. And yeah, they changed their pricing. We can't get two pallets anymore. We have to go with four pallets now.
When I Googled them, there was a lot of Blades Group, so I was like.
Yeah, no, it's, it's for rows, it's for the, um, asphalt, for the, um, pallets.
Did you get the question answered?
She actually, but that's.
Um, I'm delighted you did a lot of work as a retired accountant. This is formatted now, it's generally accepted accounting principles. For the most part, there's still a retained earnings popping up every once in a while, but other than that.
There, yeah, we, we, oh, I, I have, uh, speaking of financials, um, I have contacted the, um, audit company for coming up and doing our books. They should have a, um, engagement letter to me here in the next couple of days. I'll sign that and, and they'll start working on our, uh, financials for September of two thousand twenty-two. When I meet with them, there's a lot of cleanup in our books that we need to get off of the, um, liability side and old accounts that haven't been active since two thousand nineteen that still are on the books. And so all of those will get cleaned up and it's just a bunch of entries at closing time that we need to, nobody's ever cleaned up, so. But we work on, I am working on getting the, the financial audit, uh, completed here in the next month or so.
There was a, one more thing, um, on your general fund summary of revenue spend chart, on year-to-date, two items, um, year-to-date, engineering nineteen thousand three hundred and thirty-seven and another one for thirty-one thousand two fifty-two, and we had a budget of twenty thousand. This is on one of the last.
So start at thirty-two for January, is that what you're looking at, January? Yeah, January, she's looking at page thirty-two and you highlighted, so look at page thirty-three. Thirty-four, no wait, thirty-three, thirty-three. Right?
Yes.
This is looking at light item. The engineering and street project.
Is there a way that we can find out, not for now, but what, what bills came in that?
Yes.
Were that large an invoice?
If you, if you look at the, the back of the packet, we have every check that we wrote or A C H that we put out. So we do have a check register, so if there's a big jump in any number here, you can go to the packet and, and look and see probably where that's paid out of. And plus, you can call me at any time or come in and we, we can go through it line by line. I'm still trying to find the, are, are you looking on page thirty-five? Down at the bottom, the gray number?
No, she's looking at street projects and engineering out of your new accounting things.
What page are you on?
And it's on.
I'm on thirty-five, there's a street project engineering, twenty-one, five eighty-eight.
That, no, that's last year's. This year we spent thirty-one thousand.
Yeah, and, and additional nineteen thousand. I was curious if that has to do with comprehensive plan, if it's the road work.
No, none of that is the, neither one of those are the comprehensive plan or, or road work. That is from, um, I'll have to look and see exactly what the, the, the street is, but it is from K three, whatever they were working on.
It's going to be probably the chip seal project.
No.
And.
We haven't paid anything on the chip seal yet, and also the chip seal will be on the capital. Anything on engineering will be in capital.
Then art, the art fund?
Nope.
Because of the other three projects they're working on, K three.
No, I'll have to look and, and see, um, I just contacted K three's in January and sent back their invoices for them to, uh, resubmit them with, uh, more detail. And so, um, yeah, so we'll, we're working on that getting, because a lot of the invoices, um, didn't have very good detail and so I'm sending those back to them to, provide more detail on exactly what they were working on rather than.
So you'll pull the detail on that, thirty-one.
Yeah, I can, I can email you tomorrow and tell you what.
And we had discussed a limit on the chip seal project of what they were going to charge.
Correct. And none of that, we haven't been char, th- th- this month, we, we do have charges in there for, for them working on the, um, R F P that we just put out. So it is, but we haven't paid it yet.
Yeah.
So that's why I say I know that it hasn't because it didn't really start till January, when we got rolling on it.
Okay.
Right. Any further question? Um, and get a motion to approve number three, the financial for December twenty-second, December twenty-two.
I need to make a motion that approves the financial statements for December twenty-two.
Second.
December twenty-two, there's the two lines. I mean, we can take them together.
And twenty-three.
I'd like them in the motion to include January twenty-twenty-three.
All right, so we will, um, we will vote to approve the financial statement for December twenty-two and January twenty-three.
Councilmember Chris Grummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Heim?
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Thank you. Special order number five, discussion take possible action to approve special permit for political changes, um, as state sale, city manager rule.
Yes, in, in your packet, you do have the, um, information, the application for a special use permit for an auction, be held March twenty-third, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth at one-thirty Augusta Lane. And, um, it's, um, up to council's decision whether or not to grant the special use permit.
I move that we approved the special use permit.
Move by, come on, I'm gonna segment it by, come on, Grummer, any discussion?
Here, me.
Yes.
I just wanted to make the request that staff put this in an email announcement so that the public knows to try to avoid the area unless it's necessary, just for parking and traffic concerns.
All right, let's vote on that.
Councilmember Bob Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Heim?
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer?
Aye.
All right, passing down, so now, finally get that, get to the important part of the meeting. So if I can have the members of the Parks Board, past, present and future, um, small add-ins, um, set forward, please.
Everybody walk slow.
You want the small adding?
Small adding.
Ruth, Ruth Ann is in Wood Creek right now.
Oh, she's in Wood Creek.
So we're walking very slow.
So we're walking very slowly, so it's, give her a second, maybe.
Lock it down, get her out there.
Oh, yeah. It was lost earlier, I don't know.
Everybody know.
But so blue, the.
No, Dan's in, in front of the curtains, in front of the drapes. Oh, nicer.
Yeah.
And picking up and doing everything up.
English, where do you want it?
Anyway, for the, for the record, um, for the record, the, uh, the entire Parks and Recreation Board, um, has been recognized for the Spirit of Wood Creek Award. Um, we've been trying to do this for a couple of months and, and, uh, we finally got everybody here, or most everybody here. And if I keep talking long enough, it's not worth it.
So this is for like Posat.
This is, when did, when, when did, when did you first start working on the Posat concept and grant?
Was it, well, start working or turn it in?
No, start working on.
Early twenty-one?
No.
Wow.
Yeah, this has been going a long time. And then the spectacular events, which we also are recognizing you for, um, have been spectacular. For sure. And, um, and it's like, like everybody talks about it every year and it's like, okay, well, how are you going to top that? So, um, you know, we do have, we do have this, you have to take it house by house.
It's kind of like the stand looking up where everybody gets their day.
Exactly.
Jeff, you want to get in on there?
And then, then. Jane's starting a collection of these.
Jeff, Jeff.
Cody, get it.
Let's get in front of the, let's get the little better background.
He wants a better background.
I want, I want the, I want the drapes. And we have our, our test pilot here for the new playground.
Yeah.
What, where do you want, hey, can I?
Yeah, y'all need to go back.
You can add an extra exposure to your pool.
Hey, all right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Photo shopper and.
One, two, three.
You can shoot it up.
Uh, yeah.
Another one.
We need it off from a little bit. It comes this way.
One, you stand.
There's a high body. There you go. Oh. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you all a lot of time on the financial.
One. One, two, three. I'll take one more. One, two.
I'm embarrassed to be like, here's an empty trash can, let's play with that. Place game was amazing.
All right.
Hi, Audrey.
Thank you all, thank you. Bye.
It's very cool. All right, number seven.
May I, may I? I move to accept the traffic report.
Second.
Maybe like Grummer, second by Heim, um, I don't know about the rest of you, but I looked through that traffic report and went, whoa. They've been, they've been different.
So it covers.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Good. I like.
Um, I saw a couple of things that were very interesting and I don't think we can legislate, um, law, the law enforcement, but anything over thirty miles an hour could get a citation. Because at, at what point do we not do that? And there are a lot of warnings that are thirty-two miles an hour, for instance, on Wood Creek Drive or, uh, there's, there's a lot of them.
That was the, our council.
If I go, if I go and look at, at most recent, um, even in, in December, well, that's a citation that was good. But there's warnings for thirty-three miles in the twenty, in the twenty-five of twenty-two Wood Creek, uh, thirty-four on Champion Circle, there's, there's a lot, they're still there. The other thing that I noticed is that some of these are not even in Wood Creek. They're in Eagle Rock. And they shouldn't, I don't know if they were trying to enforce traffic in Eagle Rock instead of here, but, um, for instance, on Wood Creek, on February seventh, Wood Creek and El Camino, it was just a warning, but what were they doing in Wood Creek and El Camino, that's Eagle Rock?
But they chased them.
Yeah, they might have followed them.
That's a long way to go. Lights and sirens all the way out to both. And there's more than one of those too. There's, there's another one on, um, on the seventh. So when I noticed that, I'm thinking that, that's not using our resources well, if they're going into Eagle Rock to, um, to lose traffic. I'd love for it to, if we could spill in like that, but I don't think it's, it's something that.
No, we're checking that.
Yeah, they, they might have followed them through Wood Creek, there's whatever thing. So they have rules about like the amount of time they document something before they go over and then you, I know you weren't on council at the time, but we actually did discuss that concern about when they're going to cite and what the threshold is. And it was essentially like each officer has some discretion, but also they always cite after a certain, certain threshold. And that's like, that's what they care about is that like, if you're streeting, I think it's like over. And that's like, that's what they care about is that like if you're streeting, I think it's like over ten or I don't know what it's like. They talked about it, but that they have their own in, like, yeah. Outside of Wood Creek, I don't think they're patrolling Eagle Rock, but they could have pursued somebody through it.
You know where El Camino is? It's, it's the other end of.
Yeah.
Not at this end. So they had to travel another miles and miles and a quarter to get to stop them, which is a long way. So, um, and personally, when I, and I'm not saying this self-righteously, um, but I don't drive thirty miles an hour in the city of Wood Creek. Um, so when I see somebody driving thirty-seven, I'm scratching my head because every single time, even thirty-one miles an hour should be, should be, if they can. I know I'm, we can't legislate law enforcement, but we could certainly make recommendations for that because I know that, that two people here on this council live on Wood Creek Drive, which is the primary place where these are occurring. And it's, that's a problem. Uh, they have, uh, council member Heinz has, has small children. I know that she doesn't want to see her children hurt because of this, the last law enforcement.
That's a word, Bob. Don't put that dude over here.
No, I, I, I always do because that's where it's gonna, it, that's where the effect is, is it's real. And if we just treat it as if it's high in the sky, then that's what exactly, exactly what we get. I am.
Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I, I, sorry, you know, me and my math, uh, I broke this down and said the ten month period. And so it looks like they're not patrolling exactly when we, can we, once a week, and we knew that that could possibly happen because it's based on availability. And, but I, I do believe we asked, asked Mr. Boyd to talk about seeing if they could increase it. Did you have any, yeah, you haven't even been able to.
So I have, have a discussion with, um, friend. He asked me to kind of take this on a little bit. Um, he said he's still in negotiations, but it was actually their response before. They're kind of short-staffed for this because either it's not volunteers, but they're coming often from Penmarcos. And then they, they take our day shift or our shift, and then they have a backup shift right after it. So it's more about finding people to fill these positions than we can, but he's still. I just, it's not like it's moving as much as it.
He's exactly right. I mean, there have been a couple of weeks missed because we just couldn't get anybody to sign up. But, um, but then they're back. And then we have, we have asked about more patrols and if there's any question of whether we can get there.
Well, plus two during, um, I know during February, um, it was a lot less because of the, um, trees that were down. And we actually, um, contacted them or they contacted us. We were in communication with them where we said, don't even come out. There's nowhere to park on the side of the street because there's limbs. And so on January fourth, you can look at that, but February was forced anonymously just because we told them a couple of times to don't come out because there's no sense in it at the first time.
So I actually had a question for Brent and he said he wasn't, who's going to look into it, but, um, since I have others here that might be able to answer this question, I was curious if we are allowed to have a breakdown on the, the ones that get citations. Are, is there home address on the citation and could, or could we create a box that says, I live in Wood Creek or I don't live in Wood Creek?
There, there's, there's, uh, statistical reporting requirements that relate to the, uh, race of the driver. But we actually do not have any authority to determine if people cited our residents or not.
Okay. So I thought it would be interesting information for us to know how, how to address this feeling. Because if it's locals, then we address it one way. If it's people from out of town driving through, it's addressed in a different way. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, vote to approve.
Councilmember Deborah Heinz?
Aye.
Councilmember Linae Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Comer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Henry?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, Pastor Indiana. Item number eight, discussing take appropriate action. Um, the city manager entering the municipal services agreement with Stiefel Nicholas and company.
Um, Mayor Council, one of the, uh, charges I was given when I started this, look at all the contracts and, um, any that were three years or longer. And this one, uh, is one of those, uh, we've had this coming up on five years. It expires at the end of next month. And kind of in my wheelhouse, just because of my background for the last twenty, thirty years that I've been working, um, I know these people, um, I've worked with them a lot in my other cities issuing debt. Um, and so I thought it was a good time to, uh, entertain finding the new, uh, financial advisor. For those that may not know or to the public, the financial advisor is the one that assists you with the preparation and the issuance of bonds. Um, they're kind of like your, your financial advisor that you might have for your 401K. They kind of walk you through, make sure everything going good and it's done correctly. Um, they also help after the sale with the reporting requirements that you have to do for, um, the state in issuing those bonds. You have to do financial reporting. You have to do, um, you know, now you have to look up for arbitrage and all that. So, um, I've been working with, uh, Brad at Stiefel for probably ten years now. Um, very comfortable with him and his recommendations and how he works and the service that he gives. And so I'm recommending that, um, you approve this to enter, enter a municipal advisory services agreement with, um, Stiefel. Um, the reason I bring it up now is like I said, uh, four thirty, our old contract runs out. If we, uh, don't do anything, it automatically renews for one year. So that's why it's kind of important to do it now so we can give them the proper notification that we're changing financial advisors.
Mayor Man.
Um, I have a question. Since this is something that, uh, council member Labroom brought up, um, before we, knowing that you were coming for January, uh, I think it was worded that we were to go out for RFPs and RFQs, correct?
No. Financial services agreement, you don't go out for RFP, especially on financial services like this. You don't do that. And actually, you can't do it on cost. It's actually prohibited.
Yeah, but.
Correct.
The item asked for RFPs to be posted for all the contracts to seek.
Normally on these, you don't go out on the financial services. It's just industry practice. We've never gone up for RFP on financial advisors.
Not proposal, qualification.
Qualifications, same thing.
Yeah, it's a different thing.
Uh, okay, it's two different things. Qualification. Like I said, I've been doing this for ten years, over ten years. I know them all. Um, I know every company out there that issues bonds. I've worked with them all. We've done, I've done, um, competitive, um, negotiated, private placements. Um, we've done tax notes, um, everything you can think of. I've worked with all the, for all the big ones, all the small ones. Um, I know the guys, we can go out for qualifications. It won't change my recommendation.
I just want to make sure that we're following the process that we have.
The state law actually exempts professional services from RFQ requirements. Can't speak specifically to the.
Our policy says.
Authorization that you're talking about.
Yeah, our policy says we're supposed to have it. And when we did the item, we asked for RFQs to be posted for them all to see. And I understand that you have that ground knowledge, but the whole idea was so that the full elected body has access to that kind of knowledge. And our procurement policy doesn't say a number, but it does say that we are supposed to pick based on relative qualification for the service monetary concerns can't be the factor, um, and we're supposed to be the most qualified provider.
Correct.
Right? So that's what the po, our policy says. And then as council member Grummer explained on this item, when we directed the future city manager to do this, it was to send out for RFQs.
They can fill out requests for qualifications. Um, like I said, I know them all. I can call them up on the phone and say, I'm sending this to you. It wouldn't change who I would recommend to city council. If I got five or if I got ten, because it's all from people that I know and companies that I have worked for in the past. This is more of a relationship-based, um, type of service. That's how come, one reason why you don't have to get RFQs. Plus two, it is a specialty. I, I think all that would you say? And so, uh, it's a little bit different on the financial service side about getting free quotes. Um, it would be, in my mind, a, a, a waste of time and energy for them to do that. Um, I, I know their qualifications. Um, they can write them down on a piece of paper or we can have them fill one out. I'm just saying that it will not change my recommendation for county.
Councilmember Amber.
So as far as the RFQs are concerned, who would be the, the person or people to, um, make a determination of who's most qualified? Just as a rhetorical, almost rhetorical question, but not quite.
What, and, and just, just so we're clear, like, we're talking about state, state, there's, there's an issue of state law and city policy here, right? Professional services are typically exempted from RFQ requirements because I've, you know, I don't want to read too deep into the between the lines of legislation. But the idea here is you're going to be getting qualifications for professional services that most people aren't qualified to wear. So just because it's exempted doesn't mean that a council doesn't have the right to ask.
Right? It's in our procurement policy.
Yeah, and I look at.
Um, question, it would be us, right? It would be, you would make your recommendation and then we would be the people that determine who we feel is most qualified based on his recommendations.
So in order to work within the procurement policy, you know, it would be nothing to ask Stiefel, Hilltop, one or two others to send in their qualification sheet, which they probably have.
Samco, you know, there's.
Which they have under.
Thing about right now, we're underneath the timeframes. If not, we're going to have another year and we'll, and we'll be forced to issue the bonds.
Send them out, you could send it, send them out and then say, hey, listen, by Wednesday or Thursday, you can have something to us.
They, they don't work that way. The, they have to have time to, to the, do these. I mean, unless you want to provide me with some questions, simplified questions, um, but normally it takes, it, this is a process. I mean, if you're going to go out for qualifications, I mean, there's a bunch of stuff you can ask them. So maybe if you could spell out what questions you would like in their qualifications that I can ask them to, for, to fill out, I think maybe that would help.
I don't know that we're qualified to come up with this question.
I, I, I'm of the opinion that I don't know what I don't know. And which means that I'm totally unqualified to ask reasonable questions, to get a reasonable request for qualifications. One of the reasons why we hire city managers. You guys know a lot of this already. And, and to some extent should be structured in part with judging system.
Councilmember Heinz.
Um, how will this, so I have a series of questions. Okay, just prefacing that. How will this impact our bond funding efforts, considering we've been working with Hilltop Securities? They were anticipating payment after the bond was funded. What will we owe them moving to this other company? What, what does this look like?
Nothing. They only get paid when bonds are issued.
So all of the work they put in to get through the bond election will go unpaid?
That's why they sent you an email earlier today.
Well, that seems unfair and I respect that email for sure.
Okay.
Um, because that was a lot of effort. They came a lot and provided us a lot of counsel. Um, so what are their qualifications beyond you know Brad personally? Beyond, like, how are they better than Hilltop for it?
Better than Hilltop? They have better analysis, in my opinion. They have better advice with, um, with their proposals. Um, and if it is passed, we will be here the next meeting, um, showing the, uh, bond proposal. I think one thing that, um, I did not like about Hilltop is the refunding of that $230,000, taking a one-year payment and extending that money over another twenty, twenty years. When we have the money to pay it, that's unsound financial advice, in my opinion.
So that whole presentation that gave us that showed the, the municipal increase to the debt uh, percentage versus the concept of the benefit of holding that capital in hand and paying for the large waste connections bill we now have. Um, that, that's what you're arguing about, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I'm not into, debt is not bad. A lot of people think that's bad. It's not. If I buy a house, that's good. If I use debt to buy groceries, that's bad debt. And so taking a bond that you were going to pay in February in less than twelve months and taking that money and spreading that over another twenty years, I don't consider that use of good, the use of the funds.
Point of correction, it would not be paid in February. We had, that was a payment and then we would actually have another payment in a year.
No, it, it ends next year in twenty-four.
Yeah, that, so we have, we have two more payments on it.
We have one more payment.
After, so we've made the existing payment.
Correct. This year, we've already made it.
Finances, I think.
Correct, it is.
Yeah.
It will make the interest payment in, um, September or August. And then we'll do the final interest and principal in, uh, February again. And we'll be done with that bond series.
The, I guess the remaining question there is the idea was that we would have to cancel that debt service one way or another when issuing the bond. And you're arguing that you don't actually have to do that. You can hold on to the two debt services at the same time.
Correct.
Um, sorry, that was a tangent that we just went on, but, um, so you are using your ten years of experience of viewing companies, but you did not sign up for RFQ. You didn't look at any other companies. You, you basically based on this, an existing relationship you already had with this one. Is that correct?
Uh, the existing relationships that I had with a number of companies over the last ten years, yes. Issuing, you know, when I was in Lubbock, we did over a hundred million a year issuing bonds for the city. We did over fifty million a year for the electric company. And we also did tax notes for the city as well. We had a one billion dollar bond portfolio that I managed. I worked with them all, like I said, um, big, small, medium. We worked with tier one, tier two, and tier three companies. Um, we scheduled our bond pricing around those three tiers and those three tier companies. So, yeah, I mean, um, in the finance world, you know all of them. And yes, I have worked with probably ten to twelve different companies over the last ten years. And I see them at conferences. Um, they call on me regularly. Um, they come in the office, they talk to me on the phone, they text and emails. So yes, it is a very small, uh, close-knit community um, that we're in.
Um, so there's, and I saw that they didn't file any conflict of interest.
Correct.
Conflict of interest.
No.
Okay. Um, so the last, I think you covered just about everything, actually. Um, oh, so going back to this concept of Hilltop Securities will not get any payment. So even after the bond is issued, no portion of their effort is paid to them. So.
Correct.
They will receive no money for everything that happened before the bond election.
Correct. It is paid out when you, uh, issue those bonds. And if you look in their, um, contract, it actually shows how much they get paid for each bond.
Yeah, we thought, we, we discussed that one time, too, because they were wanting us to issue the bond in stages.
Which is a bad idea.
Kind of called that out because you're like, yeah, they get paid that percent on each stage.
Correct. And if you look at it, um, the bigger the bond issuance, the lower the fee. Whereas if you're doing a million at a time, you're getting the highest fee in its time. That's another reason why I, I, I didn't agree with their advice is letting a small bond of four million dollars into, um, different pieces.
Cool, okay.
Councilmember.
I just wanted to make a comment. We are going to need a bond. The growth committee is ready to move forward quickly. And at this time, I think, uh, manager rule has the experience and the ability to work with these people. We don't, we don't need to waste time, um, surveying a lot of people. And I think his experience should be the key here. Members have different data. So I, I think this recommendation should be followed.
Thank you, Councilmember Berman.
So I'm going to pivot off of something, come from the ground, start off, um. I'm uncomfortable a little bit with this whole concept that we had with people. I'm uncomfortable a little bit with this whole concept that we have these people work for us and they have not been paid and they will not be paid with each gen. Is there a way to build in some kind of new agreement into this that we can go well?
No, that's not the way the business works.
If somebody is a real estate salesman and they're showing you a hundred houses and then you go to somebody else, it's just the way that they get the permission, it doesn't affect that.
I I think the assumption is that Hilltop got us this.
Also, there's contracts in real estate that say that you can't do that, but and the analogy stands, it's not in their contract. So we have a tough decision to make, it's a little bit uncomfortable. And my my only concern is just sticking with our procurement policy, it doesn't specifically say you have to go for three RFQs. And when we did the item, we did ask you for that, so I think just as a principle moving forward, we would like for you to send out RFQs for the rest of the contracts and develop those questions based on your experience. That would be needed because that was the goal of direction with that that thing that passed before you were the city manager.
Just one last question, um Mr. Gordon, is there any, are there any legal ramifications to this decision versus going with the other?
I'd I'd prefer to read the contract before I take that.
Question, um can we have this, do we have time to be a judge for the workshop to have any part of that meeting? And maybe have some reach out?
Sure.
So that we can still make your the deadline for?
Yeah, we can put it on the workshop.
And then that way we have the ability to possibly talk to a couple of people, you know, maybe we have some other documents.
Sure, I can do that, whatever y'all wanna vote on.
Seconded by Nelson Henry. Vote post-bone.
Yeah, get, how many, how many RFQs?
I I don't know that that's the request.
I mean, it was just.
To go out for RFQs if we know and.
It's more.
Yeah, no, I can, I just, I just want, three or five?
Could just maybe compare your top ones and give us just a simple writing of like what your, why your preferences are the one company versus the other, because we get that you're not gonna petition and honestly, like to be honest, what we've talked about since you have come on, I trust your judgment on this. I am extremely uncomfortable terminating the bond thing with this company who's worked with us. That that bothers me just out of principle. And then I just, like I said, the RFQs in the future are really important, but I think that you'll get the the concern of is that this council is just relying on just your word and your experience. But it would be nice to have like something to read to like back that that concept of what it is that you're preferring. Exactly why one company is better than the other.
So you want me to write something up on the different companies, rather than reaching out to them?
Yeah, I was just something that I had.
Process as you were looking.
Okay, so yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm providing you what you want for that meeting to make it. Because either way, one way or the other, it it needs to be made so we can move forward and, you know, I don't have a preference.
And.
It it's council's decision, but yes, I will bring um the the rationale for for what I did and we'll we'll do it in the workshop.
Mr. Gordon, can you look at that agreement between now and? All right, we have a motion to post-bone um until Tuesday.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Comer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Thank you, Captain Hennessy, um we're going to item number nine. Discuss and take appropriate action on storm response relief programs, considering, Councilmember Heinz.
Uh I move that the council consider authorizing the creation of such program by staff and to authorize an amount to be spent total with a cap per household and to outline other details like waivers, percent match, how to find a company to contract with, et cetera.
Aye, second.
Um so there have been homes who are in need of professional assistance, I personally volunteered at a series of homes. In fact, one of them, we actually had to leave, Mayor Rasco volunteered with me actually during that day. Uh because that home, the fourth home, was too dangerous, it was clear, I think they did end up hiring somebody. And then I know that staff volunteered for a full day working in homes that needed assistance. So we've, we've logged a lot of volunteer hours, but that in a lot of these cases, it's already clear that a professional service is still needed. And then there's the concept of all of the people who haven't reached out or um, you know, just immediately knew they need professional services and can't afford it. So this item stemmed from a conversation that uh Mr. Rule and I had. Basically, the council could authorize expenditure through a relief program to uh provide services to private properties, but it's not something the city can just do willy-nilly. It's actually like a program we would have to create. So this stems out of that, in emergency response in the in the immediate. How much this is actually needed at this time, a month later, I'm not clear. But I I thought the discussion of the option would be relevant.
Yeah, I personally like the option, I like thinking that we could have a plan in place to do it. My concern is obviously where the money is going to come from, where are we gonna re-budget, where are we gonna, what are we gonna take from in order to fund it? I mean, we can put it together and have it unfunded until we can identify funding and have have the the, that's involved with programming in place. But otherwise, you know, it's like, okay, well, we'll just not do this so that we can move that money over here to do that. So I would like to make sure that we have that part of it considered carefully before we uh just say, yeah, we're gonna do this and we're gonna put, you know, fifty thousand dollars in.
Yeah, and I think we would cap um assist, a cap in assistance amount once the funds are sent, that's it. So that that idea of get your application in, I think you would cap the amount per household that would be available. And that it would be like essentially a percent match, like we're not paying for the full services, this is, the city is willing to grant total amounts. And maybe even after receipts are submitted or the way I saw this is if the city were to contract with a company like, I'm not gonna say people as if I'm advertising for them, but um they could get a discounted rate as well. And they could, you know, provide a list of addresses that are, that they're gonna be going to. So like it just depending on how the city would wanna do it, if they wanted to do it, we could either refund after, you know, submit your receipt. The other thing I put in here was a concept of um like how to decide if somebody's actually in need, so there would need to be some sort of financial statement involved of like a threshold people have to meet of like income to be eligible, like they have to come under it kind of field.
Okay, you had your hand up originally and then.
Um I have a question in regards to when applications come in, who is deciding how we respond to the impact?
So it would be, it would be staff, essentially, and they would need to, I mean, the way I see this going, if council wants to move forward with it is either we contract with the tree company to give us discounted services because we're providing a series of addresses essentially, and they will do that, they do it all the time for like a street. If a whole street, a series, they'll even go knock on doors and say, hey, we're giving a discount rate because we're working on your street, they'll do it for the city. Um so that's one way, or we could have people submit receipts and we just offer a percent payback. So we need to decide those two things if we move forward. The second one being, they would need to provide a financial statement showing a low income or even a disability statement. Um situation.
I, yeah, I would, if we had it towards this, I would prefer a percentage of, so it's helpful. But I guess it would depend on the threshold, yeah, there's a lot of issues that would be interesting.
Captain Henry.
When we started talking about eligibility, it sounds like we're getting closer to something that involves something like social services. Because now we're, we're expecting somebody to give over their financial um documents as well, some sort of thing to to back up that that they are indeed eligible. The other part that I've noticed is this appears to be primarily trees, it doesn't include something like um insurance deductibles if there was damage to their home as a result of the storm. Uh and and that would be yet another thing that might be necessary if if you're gonna do trees, you may have to do something like uh assisting with insurance deductible too, because it's basically one percent of whatever the value of the house is, it'll accomplish as much as two hundred and fifty thousand and three, or twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars uh to pay your deduct deductible first before the insurance will actually kick in. So are you including insurance in this, in your, in your thought here?
Oh, not, it wasn't originally because the primary response of this disaster has been trees. Make safe of trees. I mean, that was something that the state representative also talked about. Uh fortunately, there hasn't actually been a lot of property damage, unfortunately, that also means that the you know, the assistance isn't as available, you can't claim insurance on an entire tree down in your backyard if it didn't take out your fence. So that's what this program, the theory was, was kind of filling that gap as a city-based program, you know, um. That that was the thinking anyway.
Um as I said in the beginning, I mean, if we can get out what the, you know, plan looked like in more detail um and then and then put a pencil through by it and see if we can come up with anything. There are a couple of things that just sort of, you know, make me, make me a little nervous, like you, so if if people are just sort of submitting their receipt. Um you know, there's there's a little room for um.
Price gouging?
Putting your thumb on the scale.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, not that anybody in Woodbury would do that. Um but you know, to to have, to have somebody, um whether it's a a tree company or whether it's because of a flood, it's a, you know, carpet cleaner, you know, whatever, I mean, if it, if it, if we're really going in and saying, okay, well, the disaster relief is something that we want to be able to help with when we can. Um and and then we have a company that we say, okay, well, you qualify, we're sending X, Y, Z company out to um to help you with that and, you know, up to whatever the, you know, two thousand dollars was or whatever.
I agree with the that statement entirely, um in fact, when we kind of talked about this, I brought up we're, we're likely going to have to hire a company to work on our parks. We've already hired a company to do chipping for right away. Um so to me, it would be that same company we're already entering into city contracts with. And we say, hey, we've got a list of fifteen addresses, these people have eligibility issues, can you give us a discounted rate? They're gonna price, they're aware they're price matching. And um but so again, this is just the proposal of the idea and us outlining details if we wanna move forward with it, so that the program could be developed to be submitted at a later date, right?
Correct, and it does say just the creation, but your your motion included funding.
Well, we need to identify that, that, yeah, that wherever the budget comes from needs to be identified this evening. And I would say that the methodology, whether or not we were contracting with another company or not, needs to be identified. I would say establishing a cap per household even, just some of the fine details, if we wanna move forward with it. I would appreciate, because I can't work on a program without any guidance from from council. I mean, I could, it could be a huge waste of time.
Well, one of the things we can also draw from is the list of residents who um did reach out to the assistant that would create that gov um email. Um see where we stand on that list and if there's, if there's anybody left on that list that still needs help and reach out to them and say, hey, you know, where do you stand on this, you need help? What might the city be able to do? I mean, I'm still willing to go grab my new paints on and get in people's backyard and haul stuff off, but you know.
We we have called everyone on the list, and correct me if I'm wrong, to them. And we have talked to them and asked them and everybody on that list has been contacted and taken care of if they were able to. Some of them, like um Councilwoman Hines said, some of them were just too high um too involved for volunteer work in unsafe conditions. And so there's certain things that we didn't do, but we did call them, made sure that they were okay, or tell them, hey, this is whatever. So kind of on the assistance, I think we're good. Suzanne, would you?
There's only one left on that list that within the city limits, there's four outside city.
Okay, so there's one, one left on there, but everybody else has been taken care of.
Just one final comment, um since we're just in the planning stage. Lifeblood has been giving donations to different causes for many years. And of course, they want to give to those with the greatest financial need. But they found out trying to determine the going to financials and this kind of a sticky issue was not worthwhile and it just led to more troubles. So um that point, just trying to determine need is more for social services than out on English.
Don't cities normally, I mean, I think relief programs are pretty standard city business. So there must be some sort of standard process for determining how to apply for assistance, like I've, I've applied for all kinds of programs and submitted all kinds of financial documents when I lived in Austin. That, but that was all like solar assistance, uh you know what I mean, it wasn't, but you still had to submit stuff, you know, so I don't know, I don't, I don't know how that would differ from like a a nonprofit or like, you know. I don't, I don't know, I don't have all the.
Well, we can, we can vote on the concept, um if it passes, you know, take it to the next step, you know, just sort of put a pencil through it and um see what we can do. I still say, you know, we can reach out to people and say, hey, you know, it's like we've been able to take a little bit of a breath here, but we know that that people are still, you know, have some struggles with the results of the storm. Um get with this assistance at woodcreatix.gov and let's go out and talk to them and find out, you know, what they need. I mean, it may be, it may, you know, a lot of people in Woodbury, most people have been, you know, pretty self-sufficient. You know, so it may be less of a problem than we think it is, I don't know.
So what I'm hearing is the recommendation is maybe we use that assistance address first to see how big the need is. If people are needing, hey, we're considering making a disaster relief fund, we're trying to gauge what amount we need so we can move and direct staff to add that to the next email. Um if we did have a program, I would need to identify where in the budget coming from. We're kind of leaning towards contracting with one company versus then submitting receipts, correct? Uh do you have any ideas on a cap per household um or percent match that you're thinking would be good to pursue?
I mean, the percent match makes some sense.
Okay.
You know, that mean, you know, everybody's out in the game, you know, so so that uh instead of just coming in and, you know, writing a check, I mean, it does, it does, I think that makes the most sense personally.
Okay.
Would this be retroactive?
I I mean, I know, because I'm, I'm sorry, but if you've already paid for the services, obviously you can afford it.
I could just perceive something.
Okay, so I I move that we ask staff to use the assistance that would create gov gov address now to seek input on if a disaster relief financial assistance fund would be needed.
So this amendment to your motion?
It's a second motion.
Do you need to resolve the first motion?
Well, let's do, because if we don't, if we decide not to go forward with the first motion, there's no need for the second.
Then I withdraw. I withdraw the second motion for now, just.
Suzanne, if you have anything to add?
That motion was very long. I have everything sent for watching the video.
I move that council consider authorizing the creation of a disaster relief program by staff to authorize an amount to be spent total with cap per household and to outline other details like waivers, percent match, how to find a company to contract with, et cetera. That was the full.
I would like to make an amendment to have the word and edit out the rest of the word and just have the recommend that council consider authorizing the creation of such a program by staff and to authorize. And here, just to do it as a, and then you have the notes of all the things we discussed.
Second.
The amendment is to, is to use the first, the first part of the motion. Right, where it says, recommend the council consider authorizing the creation of.
A disaster relief program.
Of a disaster relief program and authorize, no?
Period.
Period.
The formation of a disaster.
Disaster relief program.
Well, I was going to have your background.
Next one, yeah?
I'll take the chair. I have it, and then I'll do that.
I'm sorry.
Can I, long motions like this can I please because they had a meeting?
I always send a few afterwards if they thought.
And then to eliminate delays like this. Let me write that.
It's fine, you leave it.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich?
No.
You're voting on the amendment right now.
Which amendment is it? It's the shrink language. Um, aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey?
On the amendment.
Just on the amendment.
Just on the amendment.
Aye.
All right, so, so now we are voting on the motion to look into establishing a program. Hold on, we'll do it.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich, before, I mean, this is the first event, the first motion.
This is, now, the motion on the floor is to look into establishing a program. That's what we're voting on.
Because.
Without all the details that we've talked about in the origin.
Didn't we talk about determining if there was a need first?
That's the point of this.
That's what we are voting on.
Right.
To be able to do that motion, we have to first authorize the creation, the consideration of the creation of the program. And then I will reissue that motion to send the call out to see if there's even a need for.
Okay, so we're voting on the motion to consider doing the program. In line with the vote.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Crummer?
Aye.
Now you have a second motion.
I move that we direct staff to use the assistance at woodcreek.gov address to seek input on the need for this assistance program.
The motion by Councilmember Hines, seconded by Councilmember Crummer, is to have staff reach out to residents of Wood Creek to help determine the need for the program.
Quick comment if I could. Seems like they're already doing that. They're already directed to do that, and they're already doing that. Am I correct? And, and what we've heard this evening as far as phone calls that they've made, the continuing phone calls that they will make, they're already checking to find out what else is needed.
The phone calls and emails that went out were more specifically being people needed volunteers to come to their homes and help with cleanup. This is, this would be more of a beyond that on the.
Professional services versus like drag and brush.
So basically, it's being more proactive than we've been already in terms of going forward as far as any assistance that's needed. Is that correct?
Hold on.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Crummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich?
Aye.
I don't understand. Does that affect appropriate?
Can I just have certification? So staff will reach out and use the assistance at woodcreek.gov. Do you want us to use the email and the text blast to send out the initial request for them? Is, is that the mean of distributing the message to get them to write to that email? Is, is that, is that what y'all, I'm just trying to, is that what y'all wanted to do to?
Reasonable, yeah.
Okay.
Because that's how you've been communicating with the residents.
Right, we'll put it on our website. I'm just making sure that we're on the same page, so we can do what y'all.
That's what I thought too.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, pending business for city staff. Councilmember Hines?
I move, or actually have no motion on this because I asked how it's removed in place on the workshop and it's going to be doing on the workshop. It just was delayed and being removed from there.
Oh, so this moved to the workshop. Thank you very much. Item number 11, discuss and take possible action on the approval of the purchase of a color track scanner 36" for, well, for recording the massive amounts of files and plans that we have batched all over 41 cases.
I move that we approve the scanner purchase.
I second it.
So kind of keeping in with the theme, what, I have a series of questions, but what budget line item is this coming from?
It's not in a budget item right now. It'd be under, it's going to be put under office equipment.
Okay.
And when we come, we're going to have to do a budget amendment to clean up all of this anyway. And so it will be included in there and we'll take it out of, you know, some other line item that we have extra money. We won't be taking it out of our balance or anything like that.
Okay. Is 36 inches wide enough? I don't, yeah, it's not, so.
It is for about 95% of the plan.
Okay.
And for the rest of them that are too large, I can go to the printer company and pay a dollar a page and have them scan it if it's a larger page than 36 inches wide.
And so this is a document feed scanner, not a bed scanner?
It's the same one that's currently sitting on the white table in my office.
That one doesn't work?
Yeah, I, if I may, I, I actually was trying to get this through last year.
Yeah.
But it's been sitting there not working. I mean, I took a look at it, we've had, you know, we've tried to sort of, it's not certifiable, so. And we were trying to do it last year where we had some budget surplus and it just didn't get it. So I, I would like to get this finally completed if we can.
Yeah, I was just wondering of the merits between the document feed versus the bed scanner. Obviously, I get space, saving space. Yeah, because those feed, those feed things jam up a lot, so I was just.
If in the packet you, there are other scanners.
Yeah.
Available, some of them are up to $15,000. I mean, if, if I can hold the document unfortunately or have somebody help me hold it if it's too big, then I, I prefer it. It's something cheaper that is manageable.
To clarify, we are, in our packet, there's one page on file number and it's 214. It's a one-page color track smartell.
There's three pages in there.
There's one that's separated out by itself, is that the one where approved it?
Is it the one that's landscape or the one that's portrait?
I don't know.
Okay, this is on Amazon. Everywhere I've looked, the prices have gone up from the $2,300 y'all originally paid for the one that's sitting on that white table in my office. So this is the least expensive price I could find for the exact same specific item.
I'm just clarifying that what I see in my packet is what works.
And you think, it's like a good scanner, like it didn't break because it's a bad one, you need a better one?
It hasn't worked the whole time I've been here, so it.
One thing, we'll have a word for you.
Yeah, mine that.
We'll use it in the first 90 days, just basically.
Yeah, we're very.
That is the Amazon thing, get it, scan everything.
We didn't like it.
So you're buying it from Amazon, I guess that's what you were verifying, right? Yeah.
If that's where, there's also the same prices on a couple other sites.
No, I was just looking up the other scanner.
Oh, yeah, this is standard.
Oh, it's all the same one. I was just wondering where you're buying it from. It looks like you're buying it from Amazon. Okay, they have good return for the season. Yeah.
I do think that if you're going through some, you know, serious scanning, you know, you could have a little flatbed set up to help with the feed. All right, so let's go to do this for me.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Crummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
I'm number 12. I move to adopt the application resolution authorized in Texas community development block grant program application. The required CDVG civil rights policies and the citizen participation plan for the city of Woodbury.
Second.
On my, on, again, in my packet, it's page 215. Where all these documents start.
Yeah, no, it's 101.
I have to see this.
This has happened. You've had a totally different packet somehow.
Did you click on the H, you know?
No, this is PDF.
How many total pages do you have?
Did it do with me?
I have 251. Now granted, there's a huge section that doesn't apply.
Did you download it?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the problem. No download it.
Okay, moving on.
Sorry, I didn't find back where I was. So I don't know where I, it is all in your packet, but there's a packet there. I think for everyone else. This is kind of Grant Works gave us, these agenda items is part of the process to get to order in order to get. But we need to develop a block grant, so I recommend that we approve so we can move forward.
I'll make a motion that we, that we approve this, this particular item so that we can be moved forward.
It's already been moved.
Oh.
And second, it's, it's, Councilmember Crummer, I made the motion when he was brought up and questioned it.
Exactly, it looked like the difference between 12 and 13 is an application versus adopting the resolution. Am I correct? We have to do it separately?
So the resolution includes application and the civil rights policy.
Right.
If you look at it, there's a whole bunch of stuff inside of it. So the resolution says, we're going to do these things, and then the things are separated out. So if we just adopt the resolution, we hand it to within here in the staff, they'll sign everything off, and then.
Number 13 is signatory.
Yeah, number 14 is signatory.
Only signatory, okay.
All right.
And this may be too late, but I studied this program and it says, it includes decent housing in a suitable living environment and expanding economic opportunities principally for low to moderate income. What, we're not a low to moderate income.
There are, there are, go ahead.
I will, so what we're heading with this is, I think if I can speak to an advocate fairly confirmingish. This is going to go towards roads for deer fields, including a drain, drainage. And so they've already done surveys for all the residents there. They found out the economic threshold and it's well exceeded it for the deer field. So the money of this grant will be going towards preparing the deer field, and there's some drainage issues there. Then that becomes part of their grant.
Okay, because deer fields was the only place I saw where they might, we have several vacant lots down there. Okay, so you verified the inside.
They have, Grant Works has verified, they've done a lot of workouts. Yeah, they've, so we're just basically, they're doing all the work, we're ticking off the boxes when we are required to.
I did read that there's a very low acceptance of going to test, but.
We're doing pretty well in this one, especially with the survey results that Kevin said earlier.
Yeah, Grant Works has already done the survey probably two, three weeks ago. We're well within the requirements for the grant. Yeah, so it's, it's just, like, like Chris said, it's, it's the next phase. They don't do this unless we meet that.
Make some money.
Yeah, that thingy, and so, yeah, it's just going through the process now and, and signing and, and adopting resolutions as we go through the process.
I also wanted to add that I really appreciate that Grant Works' ability with this. They brought us little things that we've had to pass, go, hey, you can get two extra points in qualification if you do this. I'm like, okay, well, let's do this. So they've done really good on top of all of it.
And I did review the reasons people were denied, and it was little format things that were really a matter of how their application was submitted.
So what Grant Works outlined for us is that each of these little steps that they present earns points that he was just talking about. So like, we could not do these things, and that's where you get those denials. But the goal is to earn as many points as possible because that's kind of how they decide for funding. The highest pointed rated applications receive funding first, and so they run out of it.
Example, a couple weeks or so ago, they, if we put up a flyer, you know, free public places, we got an additional three points.
Yeah.
So we went out and we put up flyers and took pictures of it and sent to them so we could get an extra three points for our application. So it all kind of, yeah, three points, you know, it all adds up. So we're doing, you know, whatever we can, so it, it looks promising, I'll, I'll say that.
Just one last thing.
Yeah, one last thing.
Sounds like the primary administrator would be the city manager as far as the, how, how we spend the funds and accounting. Sounds like the primary administrator would be the city manager as far as the, how, how we spend the funds and, and accounting is better.
So we initially, we went through a whole process, and Grant Works is the.
Administrator.
The administrator to the, they do it all. And then the.
Working with the city manager.
Yeah, of course. And then there's a, that we also have already organized the engineer who would be doing the.
That was all part of the original grant. Application. All right, prepare to vote.
Councilmember Chris Comer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
And by the way, at, Councilmember Bailey's request, you know, that the subject of block grants, you know, we're gonna put on the workshop agenda for two days to have a little bit further discussion about work and. So she asked for that, so I'll have that on the, I'll have that on. All right, I'm number thirteen, discussing, take appropriate action on authorized signatories.
And mayor, I move to adopt the resolution designating authorized signature, signatories for the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program.
Second.
I just want to say, this is a resolution is authorizing the mayor and the city manager as the chief executive officers when it comes to the capital of community development block grant. It also operates the mayor pro temp and the city secretary certain duties that are listed. It would be like checking the design. And it's all specific to the community development block grant.
Discussion. Call vote.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Comer?
Aye.
That's unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
And we'll move on to number fourteen. I'll just turn it over to you, Councilmember Brummer.
I move, we accept the recommendation for planning zoning regarding minimum lot sizes to be included in the subdivision house. I move to set a public hearing date for council on this issue.
Second for discussion.
Councilmember Brummer? I'm, you're on the floor, the Councilmember Hines.
You didn't have an introduction?
No.
Okay, so. There's no, so there's no report from P N Z in the packet? Did they not provide any kind of like reports?
They, they provided the report to me and I have it. I just got it today.
Would you like to share that? Is this all S T R or is?
We're doing one.
Oh, here, it's on the back, okay.
It has the S T R and the minimum lot sizes on it.
So this report doesn't align with the motion on the floor and the agenda item.
So the report is a triggering step which allows the council to pretty much do whatever it wants. The council's not limited, only acting specifically with respect to that.
Right, so that, but my concern is, is how did the recommendation in the agenda change from the report? Okay, specifically what I'm talking about is the agenda talks about adding it to subdivision, which is a completely different chapter. And we already have minimum lot sizes for connecting to wastewater, set at twelve thousand in subdivisions. The original goal of this item was to put minimum lot sizes into zoning, which is chapter one fifty-six, and that aligns with the recommendation from P N Z.
So.
And then they changed it from the document stated, they came up with a new lot size and then made it apply for all districts?
So that was what was off is. The original motion way back when was applying that lot size to all of them, yet the image that they forwarded in the packet might, you know, get my face, but.
So actually, I went back and watched that meeting and I sent Mr. Rule an email. That's not the original motion. The original motion was to follow the zoning recommendations outlined there. And that was the motion, but then their minutes were wrong and the minutes were supposed to be updated. And so their mo, their original motion prior to the public hearing was to adopt what was in the packet, which is in your packet now, as minimum lot sizes added to the various zoning districts based on, like, the need of those districts and the, the sizes of buildings being built in them. So I'm a little bit, I just.
So. So to give you some background on item fourteen, it was last minute because it had been meeting a track before the agenda was going to go out. I asked staff to find their minutes and just created item four.
Okay, well, my last point is that council has already agreed to their original motion and has already agreed to, basically, letting the ad hoc work group add minimum lot sizes into the zoning draft. And that, with the understanding that that zoning draft would come back and would, you know, have legal review, go through P N Z, go through public hearing, council, all of that met.
I think the distinction is whether we wait that till then or we just do a little, this little chunk of putting the minimum lot size into the cover really quickly.
I'll just say my personal opinion now. I would rather not pay for more public hearings prior to the ordinance being ready when we're, when we're potentially planning a larger ordinance update of that chapter, and we have a group already working on it as well. But I do appreciate that P N Z's already gone through the public hearing process on this, so it eliminates some of the question of whether or not this would be a good idea to do.
Yeah, everybody is in agreement. I mean, all, all the groups that have looked at this are in agreement that, you know, we need to do it, and it just keeps coming back in different form. Like, this one seems to say that there's only one lot size, fourteen by twenty, and, and that's not what has. I mean, that's, that's what's in here, you know, this, you know, the minimum lot size fourteen by twenty, but we have, you know, fourteen oh two oh, we have twelve thousand. So this is what's been going around.
And that's what's already been approved to be included.
Right, right. So I don't think, I don't think planning zoning is saying, no, no, throw all this out and make everything fourteen by twenty. I can't speak for them. But as our legal counsel has advised, I mean, basically, the step that now council can do, you know, what we think is right for them to do.
Yeah, I definitely don't think it should go into subdivision. We already have a statement in subdivision about wastewater. It's not the appropriate place to regulate lot sizes either by state code. State code says lot sizes should be regulated under zoning, that's the purpose, one of the purposes of zoning. And I, I don't think we're ready for a public hearing date yet, but I think we will be this month. I think this could get pretty close to being able to have that, that trajectory in mind of like, what's reasonable.
All right, well, we have a motion on the floor. What, a perfect action you want to take?
We're gonna have another public hearing. It seems that, that anything that we do here is gonna be premature. The only other understanding that I have is that the fourteen, what, fourteen five twenty is, is on all new property and not with existing property within the city of Woodbury. So if we're gonna have a public hearing, then, then perhaps we should hold this until such time as we're ready to really go forward and we know exactly what we have, rather than, that, that, just putting it through quickly because of the short time span that we have. Another public hearing may be what's required before we actually go through with this, and it may save us, in the long run, a lot of time.
So. So what we can do is accept the report of P N Z as it regards the, what, caveat, that, you know.
If I may, I withdraw my motion. And I move to accept P N Z's report.
Second.
All right, so now we have a motion on the floor to accept P N Z's report. By Councilmember Brummer, seconded by Councilmember Hines. And do you want to have anything on there, accept the, accept the report? Thank you very much. Any discussion? All right, we'll both accept the report.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Comer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich?
Aye.
All right. Right, here. There is a request, I'm about to go through the second session, before we get to item fifteen, as we get into the discussion. So this is what's due to the government code for five five one dot oh seven one for competition with legal counseling. So we'll be going into section eight thirty.
Are we just gonna sit here?
I guess, if you, you can't shut the camera down or it ends the recording.
Correct.
Lydia's already been in all of them.
Why don't we go next door?
You can pause.
Uh, they're working, they're having dinner in there. If there's a room back there.
Okay, great.
Uh, if it makes it easier, I'll, I'll leave.
Get on the camera, so you just sit right there.
Well, I don't think this will take too long.
Quick recess.
Yes, please.
Give me a markup, a recess or a rapid. Here in the table. One of like three different bags. One had the little thingies and the pens and, and I have notepad and the.
And the this and the that.
And the this and the that, and then this is my personal bag. I'm just like, oh my boy, my answer, too much stuff. And I just realized that it was in a bag.
No, no, there, there was the restroom, earlier back here.
Jeff, Jeff said call the extension and then he called reset.
He called reset. Oh, yeah, yeah, come back, come back, they're calling the reception.
Right, just come back and recall it. So instead of.
That other room is empty now. Do we want to sit down somewhere?
Isn't it standing back there?
I think it's like a construction room. They even belong in back here.
Did it combine two meanings on you? What happened to your thing?
I downloaded it and it, because it's so in order to open it.
P D F versus A T email, sounds like, right?
No, I have the P D F.
No, it did something weird. It like combined two meanings.
It added stuff.
I don't understand.
That's why, that's why in my email I said, well, why are we talking?
I'm technically disagree with Councilmember Hines.
Wow. What, Jeff?
So eight, eight thirty-five for second session.
The giraffe up? Are we calling?
That's empty, if you want to sit.
Everybody got it in here.
Down here, he did it before.
Oh, okay. I know.
I'm. How's it going?
It's good, I'm good.
They're in, uh, we're actually about to session. It's coming. We're looking, we're looking at they having laundry boxes, dinner, so we're like, hmm, they.
Oh, good, yeah, but since you have those, it's, it's.
We have taken a look. The thing of online, that should be, it's all about.
Yeah, well, I learned like, I think it's more flavorful.
Yeah.
And Jonathan was saying like, well, we can't cover it in cheese. And so, like, you can't have burger, like, whole burgers for dinner. You can't put cheese on it and then cover it, like, the meat has no flavor, but you get cheese and all the stuff, it's like. Be good and have flavor and so.
You know, this is my, my roommate and my roommate who called it kosher. And you know how hard that is in the process, that you know? She dishwasher, she knows that sort of thing, so we had to modify a lot, but we did a lot of hand washing.
It's worked, yeah.
But when I first started living with her, she was bored, so I didn't obviously, and I'm like, what? I didn't, I didn't want to get bored and modify it, because, well, my other roommate usually asked for cheese. But I'm like, huh? I said, this is gonna be difficult.
This, oh, hey, I remember. Yeah. It's just, oh, different. Everything's, yeah, everything's different. Like, they don't, some people don't fit it, and so I've learned that being met better, but like, sometimes when you're in the group, come home and they don't ask us which to go, so they'll just. Take a regular plate and dishes out, and then at the end of the weekend, they bring us all back, and we're like, we have to fill all of the way. Like, you understand, like, we gave you a dairy meal and a meat meal, and we just took both those dishes and it mixed together. And like, we, like, our silverware looks the same, we only know the difference because we don't want to pull out one bag. So if you bring us back a whole weekend's worth of dishes, like plates that can help, but not already touched, so. Yeah.
Oh my God, and did they, is it.
They don't vary, they don't vary those.
No.
Oh, that's funny. Were you in college, Steve, did you have to be? Yeah. Yeah. Well, no, no, I have one piece of, because you just wash it and it's fine, and I.
No, it's not as much.
It is, but then also my son has diarrhea.
Ah, yeah.
And so I explained it like, we, if I cook, you know, pizza on a pizza pan and it is gluten, and then I put it out of the oven and then I. Wash it, and then I put his gluten-free pizza on top of that, there's crop contamination. And you can't get, and the dish was hot enough, and then it's gonna get rid of it all, but it's not. And you can have crop contamination if there is things, so definitely. So, I mean, it's, it's more religious than it is involving, however, you know, like, there is going to be.
There was a reason for all of this way, way, way back, because it felt that, you know, bad, you know. Believed in and that sort of thing, and it became such a good concept that they just like it, you know, and it was.
Well, I was like, hmm, is that not kosher? And not really, I'm like, well, kosher, you have to get kosher.
Yeah, you have to do it.
Oh, that way, yeah. I was like, it's not kosher, it's gay, but you have to.
Oh, uh-uh, uh-uh. Just because jealousy, not.
Yes.
Right.
Oh. And then I, I wondered for a month, and I'm like, I love my food. I'm gonna do it again. But I was like, and something's not kosher, sometimes it's just the facility, but then other times, you really start with those ingredients.
Yeah, it takes like three hours to the grocery, I think.
Well, now everything's on the symbol. Yeah, they have parrot on the. Yeah, they all have symbols. Like, it'll have a G or it'll have.
I didn't know that.
So. Watch, I'm gonna session three, let me. Oh, my right hand. So it's, um.
Dairy?
Yeah, this is gonna be dairy, and so a lot of things are labeled, but H B has a label, like, if you have two and three or eight or kosher, you can have the back symbol.
Yeah.
So it's, yeah, it's a label, but it means that it's kosher as well.
Parrot means it goes either way, like, it's a little parrot.
No, it can only be ordered. Whereas like.
That's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work, but I mean, you know, I, I made a rule, Cindy, you cook what you can eat.
Right.
Yeah, you know, and we'll go to the grocery store, and you know, we need to get in, I mean, all the time, it's more nice kosher than good places. I'm like, I'm, the kosher. It's not a kosher.
Have they still have the kosher bill in, uh, the H B or?
Yes.
Oh, gosh.
That's part of the.
That, well, and my husband's saying, but I answered it, he needs to fish, you guys have seen Roman Alaska and. Or then, and so when I cook fish, I can only catch tuna or a halibut or salmon, and then like, we catch it and they're in, and cooking. So it's very different when we go to H B and they say, hey, I'd like some salmon. Okay, you're welcome.
And it's, it's so good, people love it. They don't want to eat it, but when you have it, like, gosh, and the H B.
Yeah.
It's just very good.
Oh, yeah, and there's no preserved foods, and you know, a lot of this stuff, you know, we didn't take her for granted. And eat, is what she said. When you really read that she created it.
I was wondering, but why is that not? Like, I wouldn't understand, like, and last time we, we, you said, you know, I'm having an amazing chocolate cake, and I was having a cake, and it's vegan, it's like, uh-uh. And it is two dollars for a chocolate cake.
Yeah.
I don't know. No, I don't, because you can't have anything without having meat, and so, yeah, it's just all, so like, vegans adventure as well. Cause like when the cereal works so much, it's like this, you know, home, or it's like, something like, because, you know, how do you know? There's a lot of vegan things.
We came to the workshop here and I had such an interest. And I had that since we were in college.
Well, we had, we had some ranch chicken, and like, somebody came in, they had to do it, you're not supposed to eat them, they were all chicken. They're like a potato, they're carrots, carrot is sweet, she's raw, and it's real light. It is so good, but there's no.
There's a way to do it, it's just that you have to learn the.
Yeah.
And it's like when we're leaving.
Yeah, like, a lot of the things, it's just so good, like, any people here are vegan, and it's.
Yeah.
I don't think, oh, but you eat, and then.
Oh, it's all good. In such a way that it depends on the place, the, the things around it, and so it's, it's.
Yeah.
I'm blue.
What?
My mind.
I was saying, no, no.
But with anything, they get, uh, there was a, a kosher valley in Houston, on the south, and I can't think of the name of it. So they used to garden all the time, and they had, I liked kosher, that's a, a lot of, it was a pork, it was corned beef. But, oh, good.
Cause like, I know, there are, there are turkey bacon, you know, like.
Turkey bacon and not the version that they're eating. Yeah, something that I'm also reacting to, but.
Yeah, that's good.
What's that, you know?
Yeah, that's why it's creepy, yeah.
So where do you go?
In Austin.
Austin?
Yeah. I live in.
So is he doing it as well?
No, you know, no, he actually, um, he is married.
Oh, I know, yeah. Interesting.
Yep.
I'm Austin. I was in.
Ah.
And the family has been off to the, they went to Seattle to be the CFO of Bank of America. So I went to Seattle and then, oh, it's a, it's a, it's a, we didn't see, but they called us to.
Oh, interesting.
I like your funny story.
So I know you. No, I love it, like, because it's so, yeah, because it's like, oh, there, it's perfect. Oh, didn't even like, no, we didn't like to deal with the internet or anything like that, and so, yeah.
Yeah, that's cool. That's like a magic story, that is a magic. But it's a magic place, you know? What could you do?
Right, and I, me and he spent one year when they first moved, and then, I'm sure, moved, it went off, and then, and there's always one about his bucket, and she ended up having a different, you know, somebody trapped it. And so we were just in bridge, and we could see two batches in the second room. Well, first summer we went down there and he wasn't there, but he lived there, but second summer I went, he was there.
Ah.
And so like, I mean, she had this woman out there, and then they come back the second, but, you know, like, to tell y'all.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 they, um, they go, and they do an artificial one, so she can learn a lot, and.
Wow. Well, now, I think any of the artificial ones, one of us that get older.
Yeah.
So.
And it works now.
So how did your parents know? We didn't, they, the reason I'm saying this is because they were Catholic.
Oh, really?
Oh, okay. And he was very, very, very orthodox, and I was like, hmm, well, you know, cause I hadn't seen him in a while, and she had to often visit, and then maybe, you know, like, yeah, really, and I, and I was. See, I was prepared, because I was.
Oh.
He's made fun, you know?
That's true.
Yeah. Happy that he's not Jewish.
No, oh, really?
So that, he's Catholic.
Well, yeah, and it was just something like, and orthodox, we were very, sort of do, like, even what we're here at camp.
Yeah, a lot.
Like, there's a few differences from that.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, because we kind of do this, it's very, like, even I could drive the box, I mean, I'm not Jewish, and it's the box, but I'm not Jewish, so I'm feeling very comforted, and they're like. It's because they wanna be in a place where everybody's observing it, and they're here, and so.
Yeah.
Me. I think the money.
I will follow it, yeah.
Uh-huh.
And, because you can carry things.
Yeah, we can carry.
And so I'm a little bit excited, boy, and everybody's going, I'll be posted up, and there's a string of content, and we're going, what the heck? I just wanna eat anything, I'm, it's not about that, it's really different, yeah, it's color, yeah, and like, how do you know this stuff? Right? But it was funny, because I told Daniel, the, they're made of really good. Now they got the bit, so, yeah, that's it. It was funny.
I'm like, why they put that? And he's like, no, I think he felt that, that's, he wants to be in the, the team.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's always.
I call Brian, that was time, rope tail.
Yeah, well, we, Daniel grabbed it, we have a very, very good relationship, and then they come to Rabbi, and he will have to go, and he'll have to fly.
And we, yeah, and he goes, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. They do that in Jewish neighborhoods, or in New York.
Yeah, in New York, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they can't even carry their.
For, for reasons, you know?
Like there's, yeah.
Right, because that's, so like, and you have too many, like, turn on lights, you can't, so like, and the trick of it, you have a panel for the room, and we'll have to turn those, those off. Because they can just make it in the door, and it's like this whole.
Wow.
But, and most are, oh, well, most are, you know, Jewish, and then the ones that are, you wait, that, you know.
What, so far, so far, I'm gonna use the phone.
I don't think, you know, like, yeah.
Yeah. Long time you.
Yeah. Like, it's not about the religion. You know, like, it's.
Yeah, the Catholics, like, now, and, and the other.
Yeah, I'm definitely, no, we gotta make a session, you know, like, it's.
I'll go to church on Christmas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hope you like.
I haven't even been in the marriage.
Yeah.
I've got it so much, I've never been in a family with a. I like it. You know, one of the. I mean, who, what, why? Some other, and some other mom, it was just, you know, very good, but in one thing. Other night at the center, and she and Natalie gathered, she was really, none of us, we started, and I said, you know? I'm gonna be watching, I'm getting judged, and she's like, why do you show this to people? Because they're children, that's it, you know, I'm not, and they, and they go, I think, this is, you know, I think, anyway. I'm like, it's a tale, but then Charlie's gone on the Jewish.
Oh, that was worse.
Well, I thought that thing, I don't know, Baylor, so.
Okay, uh-huh.
Yeah, and, and Baylor has this, and everybody has to go over this, and then if you separate anything on his image, and to open that, and. And now the mission.
Is that what that's like?
That's where it stops.
The old.
Okay.
Oh, really?
You know, like, you know, it's, obviously, as the Muslim, if you had, they always have creation of that, you just ate it, and then it's done. And then it was always one time, and then you just, and then it was the other, and then you, everything's the same, everything's the same, and then it's even, and it's dropped, and it's, and it's. It's really, they're always going to be satisfied, and they're all completely good.
Yeah, did one.
It is.
I think you're right.
No, and it's, it's against me. All of a sudden, something happened, and they decided, like, we know that people are just going, you know, and, yeah, this is, this is, this is, and then happened.
Yeah.
So, you, or, uh, uh, well, you know, like, it's just, yeah, I was, you know, really, big, long, and true, and, 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 yeah. And it's like, you know, first thing with blessing, you know, for, for dinner or whatever, we'd say a credit of, you know, this is the same all the time, I was always different between two. Fantastic, two days, and then, you know, and then, watch over our friends, you know, the same people have friends, and then people have families, you know, and so it's, and. She got used to it, and she's like, I don't know. And Christmas, I hope that you know. She, she's a rose, we know that. And I'm like, I give the rose to you, and that's my Christmas gift, and I'm saying, I said, well, how could you have this daughter-in-law do with the rose? And what you, you said, oh, my.
Yeah, wow. I mean, there's this, like, like, the everything, like, in my husband being American, or, we, but like, you can't go, um, to their. Well, it's good, it's amazing, but when you give them their prayers, you know, it's really angering the heart, because you have to, because the Bible, what can you do? You know, okay, so like, their power, all that, the thing, and they're, they're very, you know, like, there is this moment, because you can't, they're like, brain or maybe something. I'm angry in my heart, I can't go and ask for it, and if I'm all asking for it, then, you know, we're not, you know, that, and so, you know. Yeah, because you know, like, it's not that matter, it's been bigger things, but, you know, water, you know, you know, whatever, now it's not so much that, but like.
Yeah.
The goal is more important than doing the wrong.
I want, you know, as, uh, for the comfort, you know, for, you know, forgiveness, and, you know, it's like. To, to, for, 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 yeah, I mean, it's, it is, and you make the.
It was.
Yeah. Now, it's, but it's, and. I just think they're all very. I just think that, no.
Yes, and that's whatever, I think, yeah, you know, like, I think that, that.
A lot of shit.
Yeah, it's like, I think, like, I use this, uh, you just, you know, you have to, so, it's time, you know, the student or everyone, like, that's such a small, and it's, 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 you're about, not like, it's your day. This is what I'm saying. Thank you.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, I count four for H B, and then. Hey, gentlemen, I have a special.
Yeah.
So the special issue, teaching, and then, it's a whole game, uh, this is, I don't know, third, you know, fourth, like, long story short, professional, and then. She considered coming into the professional department and reading A I D. So then.
Yeah.
And I said, well, can somebody else, what is this? It's not much.
Well, no, I would, I would, yeah. Yeah, so my oldest son involved me, so as a parent, I've done a whole R thing, and then as a teacher, I had a baby, I have a.
Okay.
Of this.
We're in the T.
In driven springs.
Oh, okay, I caught round them.
Okay, yeah. And then I was with T C for a bit, then. Yeah, close in to the background, and my T C kids. Yeah, both of us are the spectrums, and my T C kids, my special I did, and you know, and, yeah, so I taught first.
What a good idea.
My special.
Uh-huh. And the, the fun thing about teaching hard business is they think so far outside of that. That. It's just. A lot.
One of the.
I was gonna say, but, you know, there's a lot of traditions are not always. They, but in, in, uh, you know, to try to teach him something else, and this one was on there with his. Who's. Or.
Or the guru.
Or the.
Yeah.
I, I would, yeah, I would, yeah, I'd, yeah.
Yeah.
When I was, when I was working at a school, the. And I even, I didn't, I didn't. This is what I've.
Yeah.
I, I. And she kept asking questions, asking questions, and I'm like. Uh, I'm sorry, I. I think it's never really. It's interesting, I always think, and I'm, but over and I. Okay, I said, hey, that was the one, the answer, the question, which I would think, you know. Um, I said, I would, if you don't know, you know, you know. That's what I'm like, I'm thinking, what's going on, or where is the library?
Or maybe.
So then you look at long, you think, all parts of the universe, you can search something about.
I have a little kid, and, you know, when you do a work, people are like, he's thinking about, and he's, he's very. Want to fly, but without. We wasn't everywhere in the circle, you know? It was case, it didn't matter, he was like, that's what he's been doing, I think, you could say, but he was never really looking at it, or sometimes he was, but like. Talking like, oh, wow. And, and, so I, right, well, last year, I didn't have tables, I mean, a desk, with three chairs, I have like. Tables, the team guys, couches, and everywhere, and, like, it didn't, I was like, who, who didn't show? You know, nobody, even if they're working on something, not any schools and hospitals and hiding, you know, and so then. If you want, like, the chocolate, you make, that's what they're, they're, they're. They get up, they move, and then maybe like the next boss, and then they can put a ground, and then, and then move. But now we're like, clear out the net, so, you know, for, you know, like, yeah, we didn't, I mean. Yeah, but, but they just, but they knew that they needed to move, yeah, because everybody wanted to be there. Yeah, and it's just, so I had, I think, to stand on each chair, in a picture, maybe full over the entire body, this is hard. Or like, either, uh, you know, you know.
Did you want?
Yes. It was, yeah, I, I, you know, the appearance of paying attention. Personally, the appearance not. But all the year, I was like, that's not what you do happen.
But you know, this is, you're doing such a lot.
Yeah, you know.
What's wrong?
You know? I mean, I taught in, so I didn't, I started taking my kids and stuff, and sometimes as my students got older, and since they were simply like, hey, you can one-on-one. You wanna do anything? Yeah, and.
And that's just.
And my favorite thing is, okay, we've been sitting, like, in that episode, you do that entirely, you do something that happens. They think it's in that, that's on the ground, or up again, or down, and, and. You know, you want to be like, how does both, both people start it, they're known, and they're done, yeah. So, so, and then she was like, I'm more. I knew, but, you know, it was, you know, like. Oh, wow, that's, that's, and then. She did, like, I'm not because that's what she did all.
They. Yeah, as far as I think, she passed me what that's the word, and I remember, in fact, I told her, and then, but you, you know. I think one moment, it's a Jewish one. Same, that difficult, like, and she walked straight, and, and. For Jewish, you know.
You're probably.
I'm not prepared.
Wow. And I turned around, and I, I was like, oh, like, hey, how? You're freaking.
Oh.
How is it? What?
I see.
Well, I know, like. I'm not doing, like, doing anything, but I know my. And I'm like, my mom just didn't have it, like, that kind of thing. And I remember, like, she did something, I was like, and my younger father, he was like, things, things, and so, um. He thought that I was wrong, but I had luck for doing that, and she encouraged me a bit, and she said, you, you're a conference. And he's like, well, I was not excited in here, because I was like, I get it, it's not the same thing, but like, knowing that my child is a bird, we just need some little bit of friend. It's hard, and so then, you know, so I think about that a lot, and, and you can have a problem when it comes to holidays, and what if. And treating, and what if you, this, or, you know, like, and when the, and it's, and it's like, where it's still been egg hunt, you know, like.
Yeah.
And the feeling, like, and that problem with my child, and, and he might have. Not, but to the inclusive market.
And that's not, and that is something that's not over, and I welcome.
And I'm still like, yeah, that's.
You just.
Because most of the time is not that when you.
Oh, okay.
And.
I don't think it's a problem. Because they want to get.
Right.
But I can tell you one year ago. It was, uh. It's funny, you know, it's.
What did you?
Now.
There's that. The ones that are trying to, the ones that are more and more piled on them, the ones that aren't, they're like, the. You know, the.
And I saw.
And that, I was like, I think. Out of this, eighty percent are going to be, but the good side, but it's just that. Forty, you have thirty percent, that's what it's gonna teach you, you know.
Exactly.
That, that's it, and then, the good of those eighty percent, you can all, for that, and then the ones that you can't do that, because it's like, it's. Okay, it's just that, you know, no matter.
Yeah, well, yeah, um. But I had, I had, I had, I had, I had, perhaps, he was just. The, 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 even not only being hanging out there. And, you know. I definitely, yeah, definitely, definitely, it's such a calm person. And then I just, the mom, you know, talking to her, I'm like, you know, oh. And then I'm like, yeah, I have a problem, and then I think, maybe, I don't think, maybe, like. You know, because it's like, I'm, 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 you know, they're like, they're like, yeah, they try, you know. You know, this kid, who I'm, you know, and, and it's just, you just do it. You don't think it's like, you just do it, and so I sat down and. And, and that's what's going on. Yeah, I do. So, that's why I'm. I'm. And then I'm like, I feel more, it's a, it's a. And so I'm really, I'm thinking that we could, um. What? Yeah, it's, it's, it's. Um, um, it is, but, you know, it's, it's that, I was more of a, actually, it's, you know. I want to think about, I want to think about, I, I will value it, that I think, so I think, I think, it's a, it's a, and you try to, you know, I think, it's a, it's a.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I remember.
Right? You know, I, I was rushed to, and I was, I was, I was, I was like, I don't know, I'm probably, probably, I'm like, yeah. Like, you know, I, I rushed it, and I just, 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 I don't know, I don't know, I was, I was, I was, I'm sorry, yeah.